Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Thirty, Wednesday, December eleventh. I'm going to call this meeting of the SLIP Board to order. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We just have a letter and documents from Jan Amin that would like to be read in Communications and Public Comments.
Yep. Also, I'd like to add an executive session. You have to put the terminology here.
Yep.
Uh, there's two different things. So, one would be, uh, personnel, and the other one would be responding to a letter that was drafted to us that they want to be responded.
Wait a minute. There are only certain things that you don't expect an exception for, so...
Both were asked to be in executive session. Both were asked.
Well, I mean, people can ask for it, but there are only certain things that you can do.
I know, I know, I'm trying to think.
But a letter would be where public knowledge would be undue fair to the party or enjoy yourselves.
Both these issues we have issued already discussed in the executive session, we need to go back and finish discussing, if that makes sense.
Yep. Excuse me.
So, whatever reason you used the last time, you want to excuse it again.
Well, if it's one reason, there's two.
We have a lawyer here.
Acceptance of the minutes, November twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen.
And will we accept the minutes of November twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen as printed?
I'll second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of November twenty-seventh as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications and Public Comments. I'm going to have a letter that Jan Amin...
Oh, I'm sorry. Communication and Public Comments?
Yep.
My name is on the agenda, so I'm happy to speak, if that's appropriate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
You are on there.
Thank you. All right.
Wyndham Northeast Unified Union Elementary School District, Cheryl Charles.
Thank you. And my colleague, David Major, is here with me tonight. And David, as you know, was elected to be chair, actually, of the Westminster Town School Board. We're here to give you a bit of an update, and we'll each take turns adding a couple of topics. This won't be a lengthy report, but we think there's some things in advance of town meeting that would be helpful for you all to know.
Okay. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about these things. We are going to update you on matters related to the school governance, fiscal matters, budgeting, and who has what authority. So, to begin with, you should know that the thirty-three towns that brought a lawsuit against the forced merger of their districts, that lawsuit is before the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court is hearing oral arguments at one-thirty on January fifteenth at Middlebury College. They're doing it at a place where many people can attend, because they anticipate a large number of people coming. And we don't know, at that point then, they will be making some kind of decision, presumably, but we don't know when. And that decision could be in support of the state's position that the forced merger is legal, it could be in support of the thirty-three towns saying that the forced merger was illegal, and we go back to town school boards, or it could be something in between. We don't really know. So, right now, Cheryl, why don't you talk about the budgeting process?
And related to that, I'll start with the question of really who has authority. And it is correct, and our, the towns of Athens, Grafton, Westminster, all use Larry Slayson, the town of Westminster's attorney, for everything related to matters involving Act forty-six and the implementation of that law. And so, we have complied with the law up to the point of having the townspeople approve the transitional board. We have not taken the step, as you know, of electing a new town school board, a unified, a unified, for reasons, again, that council has helped guide us around. We therefore have, of the towns of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster, the members who have served and continue to serve on the trans, the town school boards until December thirty-one, these folks, David and me and the others who were elected to serve on the Westminster Town School Board, the same for Athens and Grafton, still have authority until December thirty-one of this year. And we were by law supposed to be able to provide an audit. We'll speak to that in a moment, as well, when we get into the budget-related things. But we've also asked council, Larry Slayson, what authority does the transitional board have? And so, he has indicated to us that it's correct that the forming districts, that being the three towns, and their legal existence on December thirty-first, however, the transitional board serves as the new union district board, and shall have all authority granted to the new union district board, and everything else provided by law, until such time as the new union board members are duly elected, sworn in, and convene their first meeting. That hasn't happened. So, I'm saying this to you because we, the transitional board, then, are still responsible for developing a budget for the next school year and accepting the audit when it comes in to the three towns. Jack Brier, who you've met before, is the chair of our forcibly merged modified union school board, and I serve on that as well, as well as Melissa Carlstrom from Westminster. Jack asked David Major to co-chair a governance committee of this new forcibly merged board. We had a meeting just a few days ago, so I brought you the notes from that and Larry Slayson's rendering of his guidance to us could be found here. So, that's just some of the information that we wanted to bring you. So, a copy of these meeting notes, and it'll give you a little more of the background than I try to abbreviate here and now. Part of that is that, and I refer to it again here, maybe you just want to pass it on. The state of Vermont implemented a new de-finance system, and it has proved to be so difficult for the Westminster, for all of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, which includes all the budgets. It's Rockingham, it's the high school, it's Westminster, it's Athens, Grafton. They're having so many problems with it that they haven't been able to give us, they have an approximate final numbers that you've been providing us for the town meeting, but the audit won't be complete until the new year, and we're told that it will be ready by the time of town meeting. That has slowed everything that we're doing, as you can imagine. They are months behind what they are in previous years, and it's just been a really difficult process. And for a very experienced town business manager, who's been there thirty years, or not town, school district manager, finance manager, at any rate, we will not have, the transitional board will not have a budget for town meeting, but will need to do what we did this year, call a special meeting of the voters of the three towns, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster, to again approve a budget that we can use. One important thing about the merged budget that we're working with now is that you can still identify the costs related to Westminster, Athens, and Grafton. You can see where the money is going, which we think is important. So, that's some background, and you want to build on that there, yes?
Well, ideally, we would have an audit report of the last fiscal year, ready about now. It could be included in the town report, as it has, or actually was in this town report, and it has been for years and years. That's not going to happen because of this changing software and the difficulties it's made. And so, instead, I wrote a report to be included in the town report, which talks about the finances for the last, essentially, the last year of the Westminster Town School District, assuming the Supreme Court goes in favor of the state. That is the year that ended on June thirty. So, I've got that, it can, for inclusion in the town report, and...
Have you forwarded that?
I, yeah, I have a copy here. I actually just forwarded it to Edie, the business manager, and I wanted her just to read it through, but tomorrow, I assume she'll get it, and then I can send it on to office.
Perfect.
It's a one-page.
Perfect.
And I say in it repeatedly, these are unaudited figures, and there might be some variation, but it's not going to be huge. And, so, that's that. Now, that was for the, that audit and that budget was voted on in the town meeting of two thousand eighteen, and for...
Two thousand nineteen.
No, two thousand eighteen, because in two thousand eighteen, we voted for the budget that began July one eighteen and entered June thirty nineteen. Last year, we voted for a budget.
Oh, sorry.
But that one was, those figures that the town voted for were essentially added together with the Athens budget and the Grafton budget to make a unified budget that was again voted for by a meeting of the unified district in July. So, this essentially would be the, if everything was equal and we didn't have a software problem, this would be the last year that the town report would include an audit of the school district. Now, we have one further thing, which is that it's become clear, as we've talked about the governance of the, you know, as we've talked about the governance of the unified district and the work we have to do to figure out how it's actually going to look, because we want to talk about many articles, and exactly what the representation is going to be from the different towns, and how much power each town will have to prevent the closing of its schools, which is a big worry around the state right now. And a number of articles of agreement now are big, districts are trying to amend them to make it so that town has veto power if somebody, if the unified district wants to close their school. And, so, in order to achieve that, we want to ask you, the SLIP Board, to include two warning articles. And those are, warning articles to, to create a school advisory committee, and the school advisory committee would review and approve or recommend to the transitional board or the unified board what's listed there. But most importantly, to begin with, amendments to the articles of agreement for the unified district and how the unified districts should be governed, because that's going to be a big, assuming the Supreme Court goes for the sake, that's going to be a big subject around, and we'll need to have some sort of strong town input to make that happen. So, that, the two articles that you can read there are essentially approval of a town advisory report, and secondly, to conduct the elections on the floor, presumably, of that town advisory report. If the Supreme Court goes in favor of the thirty-three towns against forced merger, this advisory board will probably just become the new town school. But, but anyway, that's our request.
Did Larry look at this? Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Fletcher has looked at it at this point.
Okay. All of our warnings go to Larry. Larry's our representative, so he would go through it. In my last conversation with him, just so you know, he said there was just two that would be appropriate at town meeting, and one was the report of the budget, and the other one was any other proper business, which Fletcher and I had a conversation about that would give him leeway to do what he needed to do to get information out.
But that is in relation to the school.
That's correct.
This is a town article. This is not a school article.
Okay.
This is for the town to regain, it's, we're almost going backwards a century, but as if, this advisory committee would be a committee of the town, not of the school, because the school district ceases. If this is necessary, it's because the school district has ceased to exist as a separate municipality. This is an attempt to regain as much control over the process for the town as is possible. Hopefully, Larry will be agreeable to that, but the idea is, Almo, is to create as close to a town school board as possible.
Might I ask a quick question? Thank you. So, in the event of the Supreme Court ruling against the town, would we still be looking to keep this school advisory committee, at least theoretically, in existence to perform these advise and reporting?
The goal of that is to have that committee function precisely if the Supreme Court does rule against us. If the Supreme Court should rule in favor of the towns who have appealed the forced mergers, we're back to a town school district with its own board. But if they rule against us and the town school districts no longer, don't come back into life, presuming they die on December thirty-one, this is an attempt to have the town directly be still involved in its own schools.
Thank you.
My question is, I understand all of Articles One makes sense, but I don't understand Article Two.
Well, as soon as, as soon as we pass Article One, we're going to need to elect that board.
So, you're not asking that to be approved, you're asking Article Two to go ahead and...
Elect from the floor.
Oh, sorry. So, it's not, you're not doing Australian or nothing like that, you're electing?
Well, you know, the Australian ballot rule is, before you can have an Australian ballot election, the meeting has to have voted to have an Australian ballot election. So, you can never have an Australian ballot election within the same year that you do. It's the following year.
So, even if these people get a three-year term, they're being, this is the only time they're elected from the floor. The next time they go up for reelection, they have to be elected from Australian ballot.
Only if the town decides it has to.
So, that's part of, I guess that's what, that's part of how you make...
Until it's changed, they're elected from the floor. That's, the default rule is that you're elected by a vote, a live vote at the town meeting. If you choose to change that, you can go to Australian ballot, but your starting point is always elect from the floor.
Can you, can people stand up and say, "We want to have Australian"?
No. Not until the following year.
No, no, you know how you come in and you have to vote, and then the people say, "We don't want", you know how, if two people, percentage, you can say, it's, you're not being elected, but you're actually having a secret ballot. In other words, you go up and you say, you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
People get up and go, "No, I don't want to be standing, so I don't want to be..."
Sure, sure, people could move for paper ballot on the election.
That's right, yeah, I guess that's what I'm, they could actually say, "Okay, so we could actually throw out five people, then we were maybe ten people, and then you could say, 'Okay, this is how we're going to vote'".
I think it's going to depend on how that develops. If you get ten, fifteen people, not, first, you'll have to revive the moderator, because he will have food. But after that, yeah, go ahead, make a motion.
I've just never done nothing like this, that's why, just, yeah.
I should say that in the, in the Articles of Agreement that the, that the state essentially wrote, which is the initial Articles of Agreement for the first forced merger, they talk about advisory boards and the ability of towns to have advisory boards. So, that, it's not, we're not inventing this out of the blue. It's something that is suggested in the, you know, the state level as well.
So, one other quick question. If one of those members decides to get done in a few months, who is the committee that appoints the person to fill them in? The SLIP Board, because it is a SLIP Board?
Yep.
And we only fill it in till the next town meeting?
I would guess.
That is something new.
Well, it's something new and something old. It's basically a town having a town school board instead of a separate school district board.
Yeah.
You know, what we're doing accordingly to the town.
I'm just curious about the way the Middlebury, the way that they're going to handle that there. For example, I mean, on what basis, you know, for example, initially, when this whole thing got started, there were so many goals for this thing happening, and as far as I can say, you see, those goals not only weren't met, but have been made worse, you know, that they are, it's a negative. Do you think that's kind of considered?
It's, mostly, the issues are of a sort of constitutional nature.
Yeah.
Things like the voting rights, voting rights. Do you, if you ask a, empower a town to vote whether or not they want to merge, and they vote no, can you still say that they want to merge? It's that kind of example. But this, oh, another one is Westminster has a debt related to the building of the gymnasium.
Right.
Where we just paid this last budget, we paid a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on that debt, paying it off. Now, Athens and Grafton have to assume that debt they never voted for. Is that, is that constitutional? It's several issues of that nature that the Supreme Court is considering. They're not considering, is this working?
Right. Okay.
Unfortunately, the Supreme Court standard is the legislature can enact stupid things if they want to. That's sort of the political sphere. If the legislature does stupid things, hopefully, the voters vote them out. But the Supreme Court doesn't rule on whether it was a good idea, it just rules whether it's constitutional.
One other quick question. It says preschool kindergarten to grade eight. Does the, so the district handles seventh and eighth grade even though we do it, even though we kind of handle it as a town, as a separate?
It's, in fact, it's one of our, up until June thirty, it's one of our biggest budget items in the school district budget. Our budget last year was four million something. We paid eight hundred and some odd thousand to tuition seventh graders to the middle school or to the Potters Grammar School or the Potters Central School or wherever, the Compass School. So, you know, we're tuitioning all these kids to one place or another, and that's part of, or was part of, the Westminster budget.
But how does that relate to Athens and Grafton being involved with seventh and eighth grade?
They do the same thing.
So, in that board...
They don't have a middle school, they don't have a, you know, they're not part of a union district with Falls Middle School there. They tuition the kids, go wherever.
So, that's in fact why the state couldn't force a merger that included Rockingham, because Rockingham doesn't do it. So, they were incompatible systems, they couldn't force the merger on them.
And it's also why we, you know, we're used to working together as four towns with the Supervisory Union and Union High School and so on, and would far prefer to do that, and we developed this alternative governance thing where essentially it encouraged cooperation between all the towns, and at the last minute, that was rejected in favor of this merger. Thank you.
Well, you guys have been great about keeping us, you know, up to speed on what's going on, and really, it's been very interesting.
I have one request, perhaps, and that is that we know fairly quickly whether or not these articles can be approved by you or by Larry Slayson or whatever, because if not, then we want to, we probably want to have a petition.
A petition process.
And see whether we can get them to that, go warn.
We just think it's so important to have another way to have the townspeople have a voice in this process. That's what we're working for. We know you've got a full agenda. Thank you for letting us.
Thank you for everything you've done, really.
Oh, we can direct the town manager to have it.
I think we've got to have him warned before we do it, but I don't think as a board, I don't think we would object to it. If we ask him to write this article, I'll have to come back to it, so it's warned, because it's not warned tonight. You see what I'm saying? If he warns it for next meeting, we as a board could then vote on it to go ahead and put it as an article, but it wasn't warned tonight. Right, Fletcher?
When do you adopt, or when do you set your articles?
Probably in January.
I mean, doesn't this have to be in the town report itself?
It does. So, it is, it's got to be done by the, this year, thirteenth of January, so it will be their first meeting in January. We have to have them all squared away.
But we have, we have one more meeting, oh, this is the only meeting in December, is it?
That's correct.
But the first meeting...
Unless we have, unless we have one special meeting next week.
But we're also safe to say that we could do it the first week in January. Our first meeting in January, if you came back to us, we could approve it.
That's correct.
The only problem with that, they would have to trust that we're going to do it, because it doesn't give them any time to go out and...
Well, we can't speak for Larry Slayson either, so he's got to, he's got to be able to put it on his schedule and get it done, and a timely mandate.
And what is the number of signatures, if you were to petition?
It's five percent.
Was it a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty-six, I think.
I don't see why we would make you do it, but...
I think it's great. I have objections.
Neither.
And if he has an objection, you know, we can probably, maybe it's just a...
But if he does have an objection, he can override it like a hundred and one petition.
Well, the only thing, the only thing that would mess him up if he had objections to the SLIP Board doing it compared to them getting, so I think if we ask Russ to get hold of Larry, and Larry says it's okay, we'd be safe. If there is a problem, he could call you as a town manager and say, "Larry says..."
And call you at the meeting.
You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Not wait for the meeting.
Yeah.
It'll work out.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. It sounds like you have a very complicated mess.
We do.
It's going to be interesting town meeting, won't it, again?
It sure will. I'm really hoping that we'll get some kind of, the Supreme Court will make some kind of decision prior to town meeting, because that will clarify matters.
How many are on this Supreme Court?
Three.
Five.
Five. And a fifth one was just appointed, right?
It's got to be all five.
Interestingly, one of the Supreme Court members, Beth Robinson, lives in Ferrisburg. Ferrisburg is one of the towns that has gotten totally rolled over by the merged district that they, like, were, that they signed up with.
Oh, really?
Your school's closing! Every time Beth goes to Ferrisburg, apparently, people are like...
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, Jan Amin's letter.
Would you like me to read it?
I would.
So, are you going to go over articles? Is this maybe on your agenda, or is that a...
We are under six B. I mean, they're real vague right now.
Thank you, sir.
What we have talked about in the year, they have not made a determination of whether these are even close. Totally have to be whether they stay or not. Some of them are the five-year. Some of them are the five-year deals that have to be redone.
Yeah, are you ready?
Go ahead.
This is a public comment, a letter to the select board from Jan Ameen dated December 8. After the last board meeting, I was deeply curious by the $36,000 increase in gas, fuel, oil from FY17 and FY18 to FY19. So, I asked Russ and Ally to share FY17 through FY20 account transactions, and Ally helped me locate bills on Friday. I spent two hours going through the FY19 and FY20 transaction details and looking at the bills so I could understand the costs. I've put together a spreadsheet with FY17 to FY20 costs with an emphasis on diesel costs compared to total costs. I've asked Ally to send me the price per gallon for diesel in FY17 and FY18, because I didn't get that on Friday. The spreadsheet is attached. We have that somewhere.
We have the new spreadsheet attached.
Yeah. I heard Craig say that there was a lot of hauling of sand before Renault's pit sold. Russ indicated to me on Friday that he thinks the increase now is because there is another full-time employee, so there are two work crews out, and the self-hauls for materials are longer than in the past. When I asked Russ on Friday if he thought the cost for hauling sand last year were a one-time cost that wouldn't be accounted for this year or next, he said no. $31,000 increase in diesel from 1718 to FY19 would be 11,742 gallons, based on the FY19 rate of $2.64 per gallon, presumably. I know that roll-off trucks get about four miles per gallon, so I use that as worst case for dump trucks. I gave the round-trip haul to Renault's 40 miles, maybe it's more. At 40 miles, that would be 10 gallons per trip. At that rate, there would have been 1,174 trips for sand. I assume that there were other long-distance hauls in FY19 that maybe didn't occur in 1718, but in general terms, that's a lot of extra hauling that Russ projects will continue into FY21. You can give Renault 50 miles round-trip and still use four miles per gallon, that gets you 903 trips. That's a parenthesis. I don't really know what to make of the continued increase showing into this fiscal year, especially when the price per gallon is down 31 cents from last year. It seems like if things were consistent between last July through December and this year, then we should have saved about $4,000 on diesel by this point, about $12,000, about 12,000 gallons purchased today. I admit that I do not know the workings of the highway department at all. I'm only looking at financial comparisons. So, I wonder if there's some other factor, either with the trucks, more idling, or the tanks leaking, or something that resulted in a 75% increase in diesel purchases from 1718 to 1920. I was curious if there was a trend at the garage versus west-west of more diesel use that might be a clue, but I chose not to spend the time doing that comparison. I have a board meeting on the 11th in Greenfield, so I'm sharing this with you as a public comment and for your own consideration and evaluation. I do appreciate all the hours you spend on town business, including the budget. I've attached the transaction histories as well as my spreadsheet. Unfortunately, the transaction histories don't show the material purchased. You can tell from the dollar amounts, most of the diesel purchases. Sincerely, Jan. P.S. Is it feasible to consider an industrial wood pellet boiler for the highway garage instead of cordwood and/or oil? I thought the state was giving financial incentives, support for municipalities to invest in pellet furnaces with silos, but maybe that's old information. I know Putney Central School has one, but I don't know how it has worked for them or the cost associated with the pellets.
Thanks.
Do you really wanna discuss that in the budget?
Well, it's worth trying to find out why, and at least have an answer for her.
I will say that when I looked at it, it was, and it's a good thing to learn from it. We have a 10,000-gallon tank. Those $40,000 to fill up the tank. And when we did our allotment, we had a bill that I noticed that got carried, it was in the wrong year, got brought over, because I'm like, how could one person drop it off that many gallons, and a month later, somebody, well, one was the end of a contract that really shouldn't have been in the year before, and it didn't get paid till the next year. And the next one was, when that contractor left, he didn't fill the tank. So, when the new one came, they filled the tank back up. And it's a little bit of, they play the market, and how many gallons do I think we need to, down the road, discuss? How are we filling that tank when we get it, and how do we fill it when it goes to the next contract? Because that's where I kept seeing was, well, wait a minute, if one was never filling it up, were we ever getting the amount of fuel we should have? And then, did we pay it in that year? You see what I'm saying? So, if you're at the end of the year and you filled it up, well, you really didn't burn it to the next year, if I was saying. But if you didn't leave the tank full, the next year you buy, now you fill it up, well, it's because you used it the year before, and you didn't fill the tank back. And that's what I'm trying to say. It is a big difference. There's 5,000 gallons easily that you could have spent one way or the other of how you filled the tank and when you filled it.
And that's, yeah.
See what I'm saying? So, when that person got done and he didn't fill the tank when he should have, that would have been a big bill to go the prior year. Instead, you start the next year and you go fill it up, and really, let's say it was 5,000 gallons short, that 5,000 gallons should have been in the year before.
But there should be a way to show that there's more?
If we actually had a policy where it started July 1st fall and ended June 34th, you would actually be the only way you'd ever monitor exactly how much fuel you used in that year, right?
Should we write that into the contract, the bid?
Well, the problem is, like I said, we reward the bidder by X amount of gallons, and when we, all of a sudden, we could be going over, but did we go over because we bought fuel from the year before and we shouldn't have, we should have bought fuel? You know what I mean? Somewhere on July 1st, we have to look at where we are with that tank, and is it full, not full, and where, what year we actually used it. And that's why I said, I talked to Russ, I said, there's no way in one month we used $5,000 worth. It was, well, that one was really the year before. And did they really leave the tanks full? Because the next fill-up was a big bill going in. They're going like, why was that much? Or was the tank empty? Or was it half-full? And like I said, 10,000-gallon tank at $4 a gallon, $40,000 to fill it up. And we're arguing over $10,000, but that's only a quarter of the tank, you know? And what's our contract lead at where it is? And to be honest with you, sometimes the contractor comes along, he doesn't wanna keep it full because the market's down a little bit, so all he's doing is just keeping it enough. Sometimes it helps for us because we don't have the money to buy 5,000 gallons all at once, we only buy, you know, so. I think we have to look at, in this ingredients of where we actually, if we see one year up and down, is it really shouldn't have been scattered over two years?
Typically, budget justifies whether you can fill up the tank or not. If you're looking at, and you've already spent the money, then you don't wanna just go over because. And this year, if we had filled the tank, which I'm not sure if we did or not, and the price went down, we just, we just lost money. So, you have to look at what is forecasted also for fuel history.
In the year that, the year before, when we were way under budget, were we under budget because the supplier didn't wanna give us any more fuel, and so he left the tank? Because we don't monitor how full the tank is. You know what I'm saying? So, the customer, the supplier leaves and go, okay, I'm done my contract, and I'm not going to the next contract. Did he leave the tank almost empty, in that, which was a lot of fuel that we burnt in that year, that the next year we're starting out and we're buying that fuel?
So, should we monitor the tank?
It would have been at least half-full, Craig, because he, I mean, he didn't leave us empty.
No, he didn't leave you empty, but?
What you were saying, it was at least half-full. So, at that point, we said, um, because the year was closing, and we had spent our money, so.
And then it goes back to the year before. Did we start the year, that same year, did we start in the hole? You know, where did we start, you know?
And how difficult is it to monitor the amount in the tank?
It's typically not been a big deal. It has, we do it by budget. If you have money, and you know you can fit another load, you put a load in. If you don't have room, and the year's closing, it's a no-brainer. You don't, you don't get a part load. You just let it go.
So, would that be the reason that it's so much higher this year?
No.
In this budget?
No. No, it's usage. It's usage.
So, is there an explanation?
Yes. It's because we're, it's, what Craig said last meeting was the sand. We purchased that last hurrah of sand from Renault before it gets sold, so we were able to stockpile our, get our piles back. So, that also carried over. And we're hauling it further now. So, we have more machines, we're, there's like four or five factors that we've been talking about. We were shorthanded, so machines were sitting. This year, we were full steam ahead, so it's sand purchased, it is product further away, full crew, and more machines.
And so, that's the reason?
Those are the reasons why, why we're using more fuel right now. And will we get caught up? I don't see that. I don't see any sources coming closer to us. So, at this point, no, I don't. I don't think our costs will go down. Usage will go down.
I've heard, by the way, only very positive things about this road crew.
They're doing well. They're very active.
People are very happy about them.
They're very active. They've created some new incentives, and mud season was a typical example where they split the crew in half and worked 24/7, trying to keep everybody out of the mud. It was a horrible mud season, and they did a really good job trying to keep us all out of it.
All right. Let's move on to unfinished business. We can talk about this more if you'd like to, under budget.
So, in your packet is the FY21 budget, final draft. There were still four items that you needed more information, or were still up in the air, and then others that you would bring up.
Can I say something about this budget?
Sure.
It bothers me that we have spent probably a total of about four hours on discussing this budget over the last two meetings. You know, you weren't able to be at one. And the last one, we, you know, a lot of it was taken up with a discussion with the sheriff, it was all fine. But it seems to me that every year, we develop these budgets that, you know, are commendable because they cover all our costs and then some. So, we have enough, and that's the way I budget things. But it's my money, it's not the taxpayers' money. And we end up with a comfortable little surplus the last three years that I've been here. And I just don't think that's the way to run a town budget. And, so I guess my suggestion is, and particularly, I'm talking about the 3% increase across the board. It's supposed to be a cost of living increase, presumably, but the cost of living has not been above, increase has not been above 2% in the last 10 years.
Last year, it was 2.8.
That's what we voted, 2.8.
And that was the federal and state?
Right. And we, we'd already taxed, asked the taxpayers for 3%, what happened to that 0.2%? They already had to pay, it didn't matter. It didn't matter, it was 2.8. They've already paid the 3%. We asked them, and so then that money goes into our?
Surplus.
Surplus. So, I just don't think it's fair the taxpayer to have a budget where we always end up with a pretty good surplus. So, and particularly given when we get to the articles, let's see when we're gonna ask them to spend another $1 million, obviously not in the same year, presumably. I guess, you know, I never considered myself a fiscal conservative, but I would think that a 2% increase across the board is more than enough.
Well, I think that in the past years that I've been on this board, and on and off since the 70s, I think we always waited for that figure and used it.
But we've, but here's, now is when we vote the 3%. Taxpayers are paying the 3%, they're not getting to wait until we see what the CPI is.
Well, I know, but we always, I mean, why? Craig, you've been around for a long time.
No, and I agree with Toby. We've always put amount in there, but we just not even show it. We didn't show 3%, we just put the amount of money in there. And as the select board, we would, we would actually do it two times a year. We would actually go, let's do one and a half, or didn't we do? And we had a long discussion. The problem that happened, Toby, was somebody came along, saw the 3%, and came back to the argument, well, the voters already gave us the 3%. You can't take it away, which we legally can. We, so once we showed the 3%, you're 100% right, they automatically think that it's theirs, even though it takes the power of us voting on it. And sometimes that's why I'm having a problem. Why are we showing 3%? Why, if we put the dollar amount of 2%, but don't show a percentage, then it leaves us the ability to say, because they can't find where it is. But you know what I'm saying? The minute you put 3%, everybody think, oh, I'm gonna present. No, we used to actually give zero to some and more to the others.
Exactly.
You know? But we lost that by putting that in there. I don't have a problem putting the doll, putting some dollar amount in there, but not enough that somebody can go back and say, you gave us 3%. No, we put a little more money in, and we'll decide when we get there.
Right. And then the 3%, you know, is essentially, I mean, this just says nothing about our employees, and I mean, it's not that they're not worth the 3%.
Right.
But, you know, it's supposed to be a cost of living increase, and?
It could be 100%. We used to leave it as money because we sometimes gave them zero, and we gave them, we didn't increase the insurance.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Or we gave them more overtime, less than we gave them.
Right.
But the minute we put in there, and we show the budgets that we, hey, we've given them 3%, they think that there's, automatically the voter gave us the 3%, so it's our money.
Yeah. I mean, and the other thing is, so, but we do have, you do give merit increases on top of that to the road crew, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not like we're?
When they, when they create their?
Right, right. So, they're, besides the cost of living, they're getting some merit increases because we have a great road crew, and I'm happy to give them more money. But I just would be happier with 2%. And the other thing is, the listeners are asking for 3%, we gave them a 15% increase last year, asking them to, you know, do the job that we asked them to do. And we're not quite sure that they've done that yet, and then we're gonna give them 3% increase on top of that.
I think that that's where we get into problems, is this percentage they just instantly say. So, if we put some money in there, but it doesn't have to be a percentage, just some money, it leaves us the ability to just say, we're gonna decide on how we distribute it.
I'm good with that.
We might distribute it to give you more for books and less per hour. But the minute we put that little note of 3 or 4% in there, they think it's their money.
Yeah. Well, that's?
Tapped on to that.
Right. Of course, I mean, and they, but their cost of insurance goes up too. I mean, that's, not all of it, though, right?
Your employees, yeah.
But I've always questioned that. The minute you put percentage of anything, just put dollars in there, it leaves us the ability to decide where it goes and what, who gets it.
And how do we?
As long as it's in that category.
And how do we come up with that?
We just, well, one is, we just get rid of that note that says 3%, and then go back and, so if you figure 2%, is that Russ could go calculate 2%?
Yeah. I would say 2%, because otherwise you're, I mean, you're asking the taxpayers to put in that?
It's just like you said, in that budget number, if we get halfway through the year, and they've done, we have a right to wrong given to 3%. If all of a sudden, they, they're doing more or less, or whatever, than what they have, so. But right now, the minute we put it in, it seems like, well, the voters gave us that money, so you've gotta give it to us.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's my Scrooge-like suggestion.
No, Toby's right. We used to always decide.
Right.
And all of a sudden, the minute we put that note in there?
Yep.
They see it, oh, I got a 2% cost of living, or 3%, you know?
Right.
And it's a long way. I mean, this budget doesn't even stop till next year, you know? We don't know what's gonna happen from now and then.
Exactly.
It could be everybody gets a 1% because the economy went in the?
Well, that's gonna happen at some point, and here we are, you know?
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what I say. Anyway, that's what I say. What do you say, Chairman?
I would be in complete agreement with you.
Good, Sheldon. Does Sarah, did you have something to say about this, Russ?
Just that notice for you folks only, these are only on your documents, and you, as a board, in June, tell me what the increase is going to be.
Sure.
So how am I supposed to whimsically come up with a number for each individual that is on our work crew and our office crew without having a percentage? Because, or you're just going to do a flat rate. Everybody's going to get an X amount of dollars.
Well, that's what we usually do. That's what we've always done since I've been on the board, right?
No, no. What are you saying, a flat rate would be? If you're getting 18 bucks an hour, you're getting...
Oh, I see what you mean.
And you're getting 20. The one that gets 20 bucks an hour on a percentage gets more of a raise than the one that got 18.
Right.
See what I'm saying? So that's two different. But this is public information.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just saying...
You know, everybody's looking at that 3%.
It's a note for you folks, just to, so you're keeping your mind of what's happening.
I agree with Sue. I think we should just put like a less of amount, and we can always figure out how to come up with a little more.
So then in June, how are you going to...
We're going to, as a select board, like I always do, come up and say, hey, let's give these group of people 2.5, let's give these people whatever, or let's give them...
So you want to go back to the percentage?
It doesn't have to be. In the past, we actually came along and we left, we let Mark for a few years, even when you were gone, to give, decide who got how much of a raise.
Right.
Or the road crew, they could sit down and say, this one is working harder. I mean, we can have that long discussion. Tonight, all we're looking for is a dollar amount we're putting in.
Correct.
And I'm comfortable, I think, where our economy is going, it's not heading real strong that if we put 2%, but just not only put a note, just come up with some dollar, even dollar amount or something as close to it.
That would cover the 2%, and that would more than cover probably the cost of living increase, unless things go, inflation goes totally wild, which I don't think anybody expects that, so...
But if we put just a dollar amount, never a percentage, it leaves us the capability to decide who gets it and how we give it.
How do you figure out what that dollar...
I just was going to say, how do you figure it? Where do you want it?
Because when you get all...
Do you want to lump sum in a different line item?
Because when you're all done, we always have lump money rule. We were done. And when we started in there, we're going, okay, where are we going, and how many people you got, and we would decide on it.
So you want a separate line?
No.
No, well, if you just took each line where you have 3% increase, make that, so you have taken the FY budget and added 3% to it, right? So if you take the FY '20 and add 2% to it...
Yeah, I got that part.
Yep, so then you'll have a, and then...
So basically...
Make that, and just take out the 2%, just have that be the dollar amount, right? Is that what you're saying, Greg?
Yeah. I mean, it's simple. You had 158 last time under that salary raise, just make it 160 instead of 162, or 162 and a half. I don't care. Just put some dollar amount in there. I'm looking under health insurance, I'm sorry. But that's different, I'm sorry. Where is the wages? I'm trying to find wages.
Well, believe it or not, that increase affects the percentage that you put in there because your, all your workers' comp is all based on wage. So when we use 3%, that's what I do, is I take that line and do the 3%. If you only give us 2.8, then of course, that's modified into that line item immediately. So everything goes down.
Yeah, so if we do 2%, those will all go down.
That's correct.
And then, you know, we, you know, we can reconfigure it if we have to.
The 3% on the...
Well, I think the point, it feels like the point that you're making is that we shouldn't be winding up every single year with this huge surplus.
Yeah. And I mean, it feels good to us to have a surplus.
Yeah.
As a taxpayer, it doesn't feel that great to me that there's this money that...
Well, we've given back...
Once we gave back.
Twice, we've given back 100 and 200 during the last, since I've been here.
The next, even go back to when I first got on, we were always rolling some money back to help lower taxes, but doesn't mean it's...
I would just rather budget more closely than to do it that way.
I just know somewhere along this change where the minute we pass this budget, when we start talking about pay, everybody assumes that, boy, the voters gave it to us, so you've got to give it to us.
Yeah.
And I don't care what department that is in.
Right.
And somehow, that never used to be that way. We would sit down every, at least once a year, and decide how, what we're going to do.
So is this a board directive?
Yeah, exactly. Pardon?
Is this a board directive?
Well, I don't know. That's my directive, but...
What's the directive?
To come back with 2%.
2%.
Money, not the number, not the percentage.
Increase everywhere it says 3% increase, make a 2% increase from the FY '20 budget and just have that be...
Kevin?
I'm in full agreement with all my colleagues. I would, I do like having, though, like a standard that we can allude to, you know? That way, when we're benchmarking to something, as we have, which has been the COLA standard, which everybody uses, that would really put it in. I totally agree with you, Sue. But I would put it at 2.133. I know that's really big. That would be the aggregate of the last three years, and it is going down.
2.133.
Well, he has a calculator. He can do it.
2.133 would be the aggregate of the last three years. But you're absolutely, she's absolutely right on the math, I believe.
If we just put the dollar amount, the minute they see 3%, they just think they're going to get the 3%. And I just want to go back to the building for us, the select board, to decide.
But we can agree, we can agree on the percentage to give us that number.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
2.133 is fine with me.
Yeah. Okay, you have that directive. It's better than 3.
Particularly given the articles we're going to ask people to, presumably.
Say, we're going to throw all that away with one article.
Well, we can see how it works.
Yeah, okay.
It's worthy of years.
And we're, let's see, where are we on this?
Not very far. Oh, you mean on the budget? Yeah, we went through the whole thing, but there were some things that we hadn't, we left undecided.
I don't know.
Which were? Is anything in the blue still undecided? So on page 5, where we got the blue 82, I thought we decided we were going to go with that, isn't that right? This is just the old form, Russ?
No, this is a brand-new one.
So the blue 82?
You never gave me the final...
We didn't?
No. You thought about it, you said, yes, possibly, but I wanted to make sure that you are telling me what you're telling me.
What line are we talking about?
No, the sheriff's department.
The sheriff, right. We never decided.
We didn't?
For sure, did we?
Not for sure. I didn't, I didn't get it out of there.
I didn't either. I guess I could look in the minutes.
Yeah, you just passed the minutes. Anybody read the minutes?
What do they say?
Yeah.
Does anybody remember?
I wrote them. It's not in there.
Thank you, I didn't...
No.
Okay.
You didn't give me a directive to say that's what you're going to do. It was, it was a good idea. Everybody thought that, yes, probably give them a year to try it, but never...
That's just where I was coming from, maybe. Maybe that's why, but yeah. Yeah, we did have a discussion, because Toby even brought up, can we actually avoid the contract if they don't live up to it? And you said, yes.
Yes.
And I said, I think we have some way of getting out of it if they're not doing it. I think we're all for it.
Yeah.
Is what we said.
The 40-hour coverage.
We'll go 40 hours, but if, you know, three months into it or four months into it, they're not living up to it, then we're going to go back and change it. And you said we had a right to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
So do you want a motion on that?
I don't. I just need a directive. But yes, we're going to leave that in the budget. When you make your motion, it's going to incorporate all of this, so leave it at 82.
Yeah. I think that, I remember Toby, when she said that, that's when we all came to agreement.
I'm against it, but the rest of the board is for it, so...
Well, with the idea that...
Right.
We've skipped a couple.
A couple of blue things?
A couple of things on the agenda. I wrote them out for you so that you wouldn't have to...
You mean the bullets that you put underneath it?
That's correct.
Recording clerk, wage increase.
You asked me to figure out what it would cost if we did the request, and it would be $480 for FY '21.
For all of the three?
There's 24 meetings with the select board typically. There might be one or two more, but on an average year, it's 24 meetings for you folks, and it's 12 for the PC and 12 for the DRB. Those are the only recorded clerk fees that we have.
So you're not, you're taking 400, but you're dividing it between each one of those departments, basically?
Yes, you asked me for a total amount of what it would cost. It's $480.
Have you put those, you haven't put it in here, though?
I have not.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest that we go ahead and give that raise.
I'll second. Well, we're not making a motion, we're just discussing, right?
I guess, given the fact that they do more work outside the meeting, it's not just a matter of sitting at the meeting.
And this is like a year from now, too.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
One item that you should know is that the DRB clerk and the PC clerk, it's taken out of taxes through, she pays taxes out of it, where the select board one does not. It's a full amount because she's not an employee.
But the other one...
So in other words, so in other words, it's $48 roughly per meeting now, where the other one was $60, flat rate.
It's still, so it's $400 plus...
Just stating facts. I'm just trying to give you all the information you asked me for.
I can tell you, it's something I don't want to do, is write the minutes.
Well, that's why you're on the select board.
I was like, hey, give her the raise.
Yeah. Sure.
Well, you're not going to go to a this year, you're going to go to a...
Want a motion on that now?
I don't need a motion, I just need a directive. Is everybody upset with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Town garage engineering study. Yeah, she's not going to. Engineer study, town garage.
Okay, so we did talk about that. Everybody was in favor of leaving it that way if I changed the wording beside it, so I did that. But I wanted to make sure that that, yes, that's what we really wanted to do.
And, and what is that?
Or do we wait a year?
Do an engineer study on the town garage.
On the insulation, strength of the building, how to connect the two bays to it if we're leaning that way.
And where is that money? That's 15,000?
Page six, 15,000.
That's 15,000.
And that, that would be a high, in other words, that's only a budget number for us to be able to go up. Somebody could come in and bid and get it for 10.
Absolutely, but he's still got maintenance he's got to do in that line item. So we left it at 15 so that he could still do, you know, that door is still, the other door is still a question.
I think we should leave it there, just because, as you said, it's not just the engineering study, it's part of it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that a directive?
Yes.
Sheriff's proposal, I already did it.
Yep.
Gas, fuel, and oil.
So it's been 90 forever. It got changed to 75 last year for this year, excuse me, and I'm worried that that's not going to be enough. So my proposal was 82,000.
Well, did the 75, what, oh, you don't know whether the 75 is going to be enough for this year?
I'm going to tell you, with what we've spent to date, it's not going to be enough. We've already used 47% of that budget right today. We still have the hard ones coming.
The other thing is, I would say, let's go with 82, because we got no, this is dollar amount, this is not gallons.
No.
If all of a sudden, the price of fuel jumps up a buck or something like that, you really are sat and hurt. You know what I'm saying? And one of the reasons we're a little better, because we're always looking at dollars, not gallons.
Right. And there's more than gallons in that price. There's, there's all the petroleum products that make our trucks run. There's now four or five different major oils that we have to buy and utilize.
Well, even if, all the trucks now have gone through urea. So with the urea, what happened was, yeah, we cut the fuel mileage down 8%, but we also had to add 4% urea. You see what I'm saying?
It's an oil, it's an additive.
It's an additive, it's a liquid that actually takes care of the after treatment, so you get zero emissions. But it's actually liquid that we never used to have. Well, now, every truck finally, it's so new, every truck, we have zero emissions, but that's an additive that we buy that doesn't show up as fuel. It shows up that we have to exit with my bulk gallons.
Okay, I got it.
You know what I'm saying? And it's all in that same category, though.
Yeah.
So your directive is go to 82,000?
Okay.
The proposal is roughly 2.5% now. It will be a little bit less. That 1% on wages is not going to make a big percentage on the total, but it will make a difference.
Dollar-wise, on the sand and gravel, you think we're okay for right now?
For right now, yes. Looking at what we've got and what we're proposing. If you look at the revenue budget, I did do a little bit more playing around with numbers. Last year's rate was 0.6139. This year's rate will be 0.5939 because the grand list went up significantly. Even with the allocations added to it, the seven that we vote on at town meeting, that was additional $16,880. This rate will still be 0.5995, still way less than last year. So taxes for the town budget will be going down.
The school more than make up for that, but...
I'm sure it will.
All right.
Also in your packet is the letter I sent to the request. I just wanted you to have a copy of it. That is a copy. I didn't sign my name. That's correct.
Yeah. So we need, do we need to send her another letter with our decision?
No. We're still on the budget adoption, or not?
Yeah.
Are we ready to adopt it? You want it to come back with the 2% on, with the 2.1, whatever, the 333?
2.1.
Want to wait till January to...
2.133.
Isn't there another issue we have to address, too?
You can't wait till January. It's got to get into the town report, and our deadline is this 13th. It's got to get into the town report, and our deadline is this thirteenth. It's not going to give me enough time to format that whole budget to get it into our town report.
If we approve the budget for you, at least that gives you...
Yes.
At least it gives you a boilerplate to get going on.
Or we can have a meeting next week, the eighteenth.
I don't have a problem with going ahead and doing it. I got a couple things, but I don't think it's going to affect the bottom line at all or anything, so I'll...
What were your thoughts?
I guess, I was just going to say, so we would approve a budget that says... and how would we incorporate the fact that we've made some changes?
You'd have to say the changes.
And then, in executive session, we don't know if that's going to be...
I don't, I don't, I've got my foot feeling that when we come out, we're not going to change anything, okay? I could be wrong, but I would say we're not going to come out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
So the directives have to be repeated?
They should be.
Yeah.
They should be.
The ones that we just actually told you?
The four that are there.
Okay, so the recording, so the final draft and adoption will be with these directives. Recording clerk wage increase of four-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Four-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
Four-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
You're making the motion, Sheldon?
Sure, why not? You want me to do them separately, or you want it done? The town garage engineering study, where are we going with that? Have we done anything on it?
Fifteen thousand.
We have fifteen thousand dollars devoted to that. Sheriff's proposal at eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah. By coincidence, it's the same as the fuel.
And gas, fuel, and oil at eighty-two thousand dollars.
Just coincidence, they're all the same, but though...
And the increase to be two-point...
Two-point-one-three-three.
I'll second that motion that the chair made.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept the budget with the directives and...
Yep.
We're all clear, we're all clear on what those changes are?
Yes.
Toby?
As long as Russ is clear, that's all I care about.
Right, I am.
All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will forward that to you in your packet, just specifically for that.
Land gift, Island Corporation.
I have no new business on either B nor C.
No word from Vanessa Stern, right?
Any other unfinished business to be discussed at this time? Hearing none, we'll go on to new business. Town reports dedication, citizen of the year, executive session. I will undertake a motion to go into executive session for...
Some executive session?
Education, citizen of the year.
A second.
Motion's been moved and signed, they're going to executive session for citizen of the year. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're going to executive session.
Update. So, the three will have the new total, the monies, without the articles in it, as we did last year. Really, there's nothing for you to nay and say great to. I'm assuming all of the allocations will come in with their petitions, but at this point, we've received none. So, they're working on it.
What's the deadline?
That deadline is January twenty-second or something, and we take that. We've already given it to the printers, and all he does is take that one page and insert it and sends them out. So it's already in the printing process. Up to number fifteen, Article fifteen. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen are something that you need to help, whether you want them in there, whether you want them under other business, if you're not planning on doing it this year. These are things that we talked about, that you've talked about, and I didn't want to forget about them. So I put them down here.
Under sixteen, is it possible to just have that article to say we will... to give the approval of the select board to pursue purchase of a gravel pit?
No.
You can't.
You can't. Only the taxpayers can buy and sell land.
No, I'm not asking to buy it, to pursue agreement with it. You know what I'm saying? Pursue that we bring it back to the voters to actually vote on the dollar. It's going to take a year or so of studying and all that. So we would go to the voters, say, we don't want you to spend the money now, but we just want your blessing to us to go into negotiation to the possibility of purchasing it. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Because right now, you're... They're going to want to know how many dollars, how many dollars are going to be...
Well, we could tell them we were...
Well, they're going to want to know how many years of sand, gravel, and so forth.
Yeah, which I haven't started doing that, because I need an directive.
Before we go too deep, if the voters are all saying, we don't want to own a gravel pit, I think that, that was my feeling, was first, do we go to the voters and say, we have an opportunity to pursue a gravel pit that's going to cost some money, roughly, and we would need to come back to you with an article, you know, a year from now, and then ask you to vote on it? Is this something that you think we should be doing? If the voters go like they did with the Rock Corrie and go, no way, you're going by my house, and no way you're doing it, why spend the time to go and pursue it all? Because between now and this meeting, you yourself is going to have to come up with some information and some time.
They're going to say, where, that's going to be...
Yeah. Where's all... and you can tell them where on that, I think, at that period of time, but it's just a matter of, you're asking to actually give us the money, and they're like, wait a minute, you just kind of sprung this on me.
Right.
You don't give us any time to even think about it. There's a lot of monies, you know?
Uh-huh, yeah, I agree with you.
We're asking for the permission to pursue a feasibility study for acquisition of a gravel pit.
There you go.
Up to how much of dollars?
Up to a six-hundred-thousand-dollar max.
Yeah.
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 I meant for the feasibility study.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a bit much.
Yeah.
I will defer.
Say, we might as well just buy the pit.
I would defer to an expert.
Who are the feasibility studies?
I'm not an expert.
You should start.
For six-hundred thousand, I'll start.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
And the way Kevin's doing it is right. If we just ask for some money to do the study...
Right.
Yeah.
You're basically asking for the blessing to go ahead and pursue it.
Right.
So I actually like your idea real well.
But not six-hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of...
What would be, I'm not exactly sure what a study would be.
Five to ten thousand dollars. I was going to say, not to exceed ten thousand.
Not to exceed ten thousand.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Just a point, I'm curious, if we did have this article that says, we decide, oh, yeah, we want to ask the town to pay six-hundred thousand, would that mean that this year they would have to, or next year they'd have to come with six-hundred thousand?
No, we would have to explain it, but basically, what this person was willing to find.
That's what I thought, right.
It's a payment plan for ten years.
You still would have to...
So this article does not mean that it would have to come out of...
I just wrote that in so that you guys would have conversation.
But Sue, you're not that far off. What it is, people would come out, well, they're going to spend six-hundred thousand, this is going to kill us, because you don't have time in an article to explain that, well, wait a minute, we only want to pay it over ten years.
Right, gotcha.
And that's why I was thinking, this is the way what he's saying, it's like, just we want... if they say they don't want the study done, then we're done.
Right.
All right.
Going for that.
Yeah. So do you need a motion to change that article?
No.
You're upset?
I'm just going to read it to you, though. To see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars to create a feasibility study to purchase a parcel of land with a house and commercial building for the purpose of sanding gravel processing approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand cubic yards.
I, you know, you have, it sounds like you already have it all figured out with that, what you just said. And you may as, I mean, I don't understand, because it is a specific piece of land that we are talking about. We're not just going to go out and look for something. You're describing a whole piece of land.
That's correct.
The houses and so on and so forth. So it seems kind of strange to not say that this is available.
Well, I mean, I still don't have, you just still have all the information that we...
In your article, right, they're going to ask you questions, that's where...
That we don't know the answer to, yeah.
But you will at town meeting, this gets, Fletcher started and the conversation started, but then you guys are going to be asked, what the hell is this?
We don't know, that's why you have the feasibility study.
Well, then you want the feasibility study to weigh all the options, make sure that it's worth it. We have done test pits, but we can tell them what, where the land is, what it consists of, what's around it, what's the history of the land. I mean, we can give them as much information as we have, and then...
Only that, it's, I mean, you need a year to figure out how to get the permits and all that. Because somewhat along the system, you could say, well, we did all this, but we can't get the permits to haul it out, because the state wouldn't let us do it. Several towns just ran into that issue of all that. So, there's a lot of studies before you just go to them and say, we got a chance to... well, if you buy it and you're not allowed to haul the granite, gravel, and sand out of it, what did we just buy? We just really...
So what, we asking for ten thousand dollars, is that what you said?
That's what you guys said, yep.
Up to that, to meet our due diligence requirements, to see if it's feasible or not.
Yeah.
Then all the questions they were going to ask, that's what we're asking you to do. Let us, give us a chance to get it all prepared and come back. It also notifies to the owner that if they vote yes for it, it's a... then at that point, that voter, that landowner would be more comfortable that, okay, now I'm ready to pursue, because so far, you know, he's having his own hold if we have a town meeting. But this is good enough.
Yeah.
To say, okay, this is what I want to do, okay? We really, are we really going to go to Article seventeen? Are we really going to spend three-hundred thousand to do that?
No. I've had a contractor give me an estimate, a high estimate, and it's dead on what I told you. So that number does change a little. If you give me a directive, I can scramble and find out what's available for funding, so that it can offset some of this cost.
I mean, like a grant?
Exactly.
So do we even want to have that article on there?
Well, I...
You folks had talked, you specifically wanted to give them the option to leave it alone, to fix it appropriately, make it at least a one-and-a-half-lane road, or do a, just a little fix. So it was more conversation, and again, I just trotted this down so that you'd have this conversation to say, no.
So do we want to, do we want to, what, do we want to say, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate up to...
Yeah, it should be up to...
Three-hundred thousand dollars to repair approximately the six-hundred feet of town road on Henwood Hill. And then we can address...
The bridge thing.
We can address...
Yep.
Why we're fixing it, or why it needs to be fixed. We can address the bridge thing and why we feel that it needs to be fixed, because of the extra traffic that we know we're going to have on it, unless we close the road. Which I guess is another possibility.
I know that there's a couple guarantees out there for monies, and I will take them off of that, so that we're not asking for monies that we know we can...
It's still, it's still three-hundred thousand that we put in our budget.
No, it isn't.
If, no, the way it is now, the way it is now, we still, we're still raising tax money up to three-hundred thousand more.
We could do it.
You know what I'm saying, and that's a chunk of money for fixing it.
But then why would I say no?
But on the other hand, do we just want to start repairing it, and so it doesn't get done in one year? It gets done in two or three years. I guess that's my point.
Well, and the point Russ is making is we make people pay, we feared a thousand dollars in taxes, but it might only cost two...
But we don't know that, but still...
Or whatever, yeah.
But it's too late by then. In other words, you've already taxed them for the three years.
I know, I totally agree with you.
I just said, I know there's some monies out there that are guarantees for projects like this. I would take that off the top. You don't want to ask for three hundred when you know you can do it for a buck fifty. So you go in with the low, saying that this is project is...
In this case, I would want to go even under budget if we, you know what I'm saying?
And we can make up the difference.
We make up the difference, exactly, I guess what I'm saying. We're just trying to save forty thousand dollars, and we just put three hundred thousand into a road.
I understand, yeah.
There is an imperative here, and I appreciate you bringing this to my attention, because I'm not, this is not my bailiwick. This is a dangerous situation up there.
Yes, it is.
Right, well, we all agree on that, right? The town agrees on it, so...
It's got to be fixed.
As we highlight that, too, I think that's important. Something has to be done about this area.
It does, but if we have three-hundred thousand dollars in there, up to three-hundred thousand dollars, and if we get grants, that's fine. If not, if we don't get any grants, we still got to fix the damn road. One way or another.
But if we put that article in there with three-hundred thousand, doesn't that go into the...
It does.
Yes, it does.
In other words, you're not giving, you're not giving the voters a choice. You automatically take the three-hundred thousand out.
Pay out, there you go.
My feeling is, hey, let's just game on, put a hundred and fifty in. You get some grant money, you get it to two, two-fifty, and we don't quite get it all done, but we get it so it's safe.
Yeah.
We'll finish it in another year. But this three-hundred thousand is a lot of money, you know?
I'm with you, I agree.
Because even though, much as we've had discussion tonight about only going up or not going up, we haven't added all the articles.
Yeah.
When we got on all the articles, we are increasing our taxes.
Yes, we are, exactly.
You know, and that, like I said, for all the things we did, we just put three hundred more in there that we didn't have last year, you know? So can we change that to a hundred and fifty, and I'm only pulling a number out of, you know, what, whatever?
I can get it back to you on the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted on what I feel like...
It'll still be a big bump, you know?
And do we, might as well go on to eighteen. Do we really got to do eighteen this next year?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
Again, I, this was stuff that we've talked about.
This is all discussion, no, I'm not, so I'm bringing it up to the other select woman, because I'm having a hard time spending sixty thousand dollars next year to fix that wall on it. We should be charging the people that are in it, that are using it, which are those people that do... Yeah, people who have little plots in there.
I think it's a little late to charge them.
Yeah.
Well, last, the last meeting, Chris said, we were way under budget, we were way under taxing people for it, whatever, you know?
Oh, right.
You know?
We're underneath what we should be charging.
Yeah. My feeling is, we shouldn't put that Article eighteen there.
I agree. We table this one.
Well, I think it ought to be in there. So, Sue?
You're only saying that because you lost out on the treatment budget.
No, it's one of those things, I think, needs to be in front of the taxpayers. They're going to, they're either going to vote for it, or they're not going to vote for it, one of the others. And if they vote for it this year, fine, if they don't, we'll bring it up again next year.
Let's be honest, if you had to take the sixty and put it into three hundred to fix the road, I'd have less of a problem than, because this is not a safety issue right now, you know, on it.
No.
If we don't fix it this year, how much more serious will it get?
It's not going to jeopardize the integrity of the...
No, but you know, caskets aren't going to start falling down. They might in back of my shop, but I don't think that...
Honestly, if you went back and you put ten thousand dollars more into the cemetery fund, and for the next few years, you put another ten, and then we end up owing thirty to fix the wall, because I don't know why it couldn't come out of the cemetery fund, I mean that, right? Since you said it's not part of the road, it's on their land.
You'd have, you, as a board, would have to take the portion of surplus and actually put it in the special cemetery fund.
Yep.
And then we could spend out of it.
Yeah, if we started building it...
But you can't do...
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I'm basically agreeing with you. If we just said, take the article away and maybe increase...
Toby, what's your pleasure?
I don't think we need to do it this year.
But I think we need to come back and then, maybe this year, we need to start putting some money aside to fix it, okay?
Perfect. Let's see, do we need to Fletcher, we're in order, the order of... we are going to be first again this year as we were last year.
No, fire, town, school.
Okay, so school will be last.
School is recommended to be last, to give Fletcher a little more flexibility.
Which means we start with the fire district at ten, and at ten oh five, you got to go.
Sounds like a plan. And that's okay with you, you're on board with that, all right? Make sure.
God, you got a lot of reading articles, buddy, you know that.
Yeah, these ones are all short. You know, I hear they gave that school thing, it was four pages long, I forget it.
Do we, you know, last year, we had sort of public information here, and we started a meeting early. We didn't have a huge number of people that came, but on the budget, after we passed the budget? Did a meeting, do you want to talk about that later, whether, is it worth to do that again?
I think it would have, if I learned anything last night, it was not worth it without the school board here. If you had the school board here, when everybody quizzes, and then, because that's the town group.
Right.
Invite the fire department here, too. If we invite the other two parties, and we go, this is a pre-town meeting, if we're discussing financial or above, we could discuss it.
Send it to answer questions of people instead of at town meeting, you know, when they're like, wow!
It might be the school board asking us the questions, or the fire department asks us the question. But it gives us as a town a good insight to where is the school, because we're sitting here not knowing what their number is. We don't know what the fire department's number is. They could be coming for us, and they could be coming from the voters for a four-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck, and we wouldn't even know it, you know what I'm saying? And I think it would just be more comfortable that we, if we met with all three departments, and, you know, we got a two percent, and we got a six percent, so we'd know what the voters...
That's a good idea, I don't know how you'd arrange that, but...
Invite them.
Invite them.
Your next meeting is January eighth.
Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily have to be the next meeting, but...
It doesn't have to be until that...
It does, because again... It does, because again, the town report drives everything.
No, let's, no, this is not that, this is after we've already done everything.
Yeah, it's like an information.
Oh, this is just an information.
It's information.
She's after information, we done ours, the school done theirs, the fire department done theirs, and then basically.
You do it in February, actually.
Could be anytime.
Yeah. I'm just putting it out there, if we wanna try to do that again.
I would like to try that system.
That's good, I, I like that, actually.
Especially with the school being so, not, people not knowing.
Yeah.
You know? I remember last year, we never met with the school, but we heard all speculation, we really didn't know what was going on, and.
They still don't know what's really going on.
So you, you're willing to move your night?
Oh, to one of theirs?
Yep.
It's fine.
Throw it out and ask, we'll see what it is.
I'm limited with the, the meetings that I have, but, um, I'll do what I can.
So you're trying to say they meet, do they meet the same nights we do?
No, they do not, no, um, I think the fire district is on a Tuesday, um, and I don't know when the school is now.
But if, if you invite him as a town manager, as a pre, a pre-town meeting, and we, all three to meet, and ask Fletcher to come, so he, he can have his input of like.
Probably, but, yeah, cause they'll send somebody from the fire district anyway, so.
Well, it's a good question, cause this year's gonna be really different, do we, as, 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 in this meeting, what would be discussed, do we even ask anybody to bring food? Is this meeting gonna be over before noon?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Exactly.
That, you know?
But now, I think it, it will be, because the school's gonna have quite a bit to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be the last time we have a meeting.
We can have a few catfights over these, uh, or some of these articles.
Oh, yeah, some of these, the same, yeah, I know which one you're talking about.
My favorite?
Yeah. The one that, he just smiled at me, he's in front of Allen Brothers getting signatures.
I got one in the mail.
Did you?
I got a petition mailed to my house, saying, please have your family members, I'll sign this.
Yeah, they've been real aggressive this year.
I'll say.
Yeah.
Surprise the head.
Didn't they give you a pre, a pre-stamped envelope, send it back?
No, I guess they wanted a donation of that. I could drop it off directly at the town hall, I guess.
Or not.
Or not.
Okay, um, where are we?
Managers report.
No, we aren't getting that for.
Executive session.
Town report dedication of the citizen of the year, we're doing that executive session, warnings of the town meeting, we've done that. Executive session for personnel matter, which is continuing. The executive session that we had at our last meeting. Which was for a, I forgot what it was for now.
You have two personnel matters in a letter.
All right, we'll take care of it.
All right. So, we need to make a motion to go into executive session for the two.
Well, I'll do it again, but I thought we already did it up here.
We did it, well, this is, this was a completely separate issue here.
Oh, I, I'm a little confused, but I'll make a motion, we go on executive discussion to discuss two personnel matters.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for two personnel matters, all those in favor, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Managers report.
Okay, um, town hall, construction, um, on the IT room is supposed to start tomorrow. And major, uh, date to start the renovation for the rooms is January 6th. There is a broadband kickoff meeting at Wyndham Regional, by the Wyndham Regional Commission in New Fane, Vermont, you are all invited.
What does that mean?
In New Fane. They're trying to get broadband to everyone, and, um, they're having a committee, um, formed from different towns that are still in, in the dark with broadband. So, I plan on going, um, I, I'm sorry, I, I thought I had the information, and I couldn't find it, um, at the last hour to get, give it to you. If you're interested, I'll just take your name, and I'll mail it to you, I'll email it to you. Kevin?
Yeah.
When's it gonna be?
I don't know, I'm sorry, I, like I said, I couldn't. Susan?
Yeah.
Why don't I just send it to all of you?
Here we go.
Good.
Once I find it, sorry. Uh, the assisted living slash senior housing, um, committee has set their first meeting at, um, 2 o'clock on December 17th, here at the town hall. There is five volunteers now with Kevin and Susan.
Total of seven altogether?
No, five, all, yeah, seven people, sorry, yes. I need to know if we're still in agreeance to do the select board Christmas party. You guys like that?
I like it.
Sure.
We're up for it, but I just wanna make sure that you guys are not getting sick of it, or.
Why did we look like we weren't having a good time last year?
She, she has thrown out, and I say she, the boss, has thrown out that you can have a brunch, if you want to change it up a little bit, or you could have it start at 3:00 in the afternoon.
We get our teeth cleaned, actually.
And go till 7:00 or something, or you can have it.
Why are we getting that old, aren't we?
Like we always.
Gotta go at 3:00, you're on my dark, yeah.
Could we take a nap?
Good luck with that.
Now, 4.
Well, are you gonna, I, I mean, I still do have, I mean, I missed it last year, and I may have to miss it again if you do it at a time that I won't be here.
I haven't picked the date, typically, it's a month from right about now, January.
Well, I go.
Second week.
Off to piano camp on the 17th. And I'm gone until the 26th.
We'll do it on the 25th, that's not a problem.
17th through what? 25th?
26th.
26th, okay.
Yeah, I don't care what time it is, I mean, I can go in the evening.
All right, I, I, I like it where it is, but it's up to you guys by far.
Works for me.
All right.